I have to go. I think it's gonna take long.
Yeah.
Are you gonna present from out here, Hal?
I don't, should I feel good?
I feel fine. But it's like...
You watch that Carolina game?
So I just can't talk.
Watch that Carolina game?
No, it made me nervous, so I just kept checking the score.
Yeah, he was on the, uh... He was on the board, uh, they welcomed him.
No, no, no.
Maybe I'll come out and ask somewhere else.
Me, not that I know of, I just... It's a little hell, I'm just off and I think it's...
Who's been kind of waiting for this? I believe in her case. Be, be nice to me. I was thinking about specific.
So I'm...
Really?
Yeah.
Interesting.
I had a couple of days in my life.
Had a bit of time. I mean... Some of these crowds. There was.
That.
Here's a back one.
It's early. And so they talked.
No, it's not. Red record.
All right. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and we welcome you to this special call meeting of the Randolph County Board of Commissioners. We officially call this meeting to order. As we, as is our custom now, folks are watching on Facebook and YouTube, and we welcome you also to this process. Purpose of this call meeting tonight is to hear an appeal on a decision made by the Randolph County Planning and Zoning Board. And, uh, we will open the meeting tonight and have County Manager Mr. Johnson, who's also doubling as our planning and zoning administrator for the last three or four months. So he will introduce the issues, and then we will open the process for public comments as we go through the process tonight of rendering a decision on the appeal. So thank you again for being here, and we will ask Mr. Johnson to present.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, we have one request tonight, and this is a request of Russell Brady. And, uh, he, he was requesting to rezon 4.3 acres. This is out of a 30.4 acre track down on Highway 22 in Coal Ridge Township. The proposed conditional zoning district would allow a sawmill in a proposed 40-foot by 80-foot building that's on the site plan. I'll take you through that. Outline Daniella is the property that's under question. There's Henshaw Town Road and Highway 22. It has frontage on both of those properties. And here's an actual survey of the site itself. And aerial photograph. And these are some pictures of the surrounding area.
How, is it just, I noticed, it doesn't show that the boundaries touch, I guess, is that where the right-of-way to the roads, there's not even kind of an easement involved in this?
That, no, that'd be the right-of-way to the road, uh, out there. And, uh, the plant, Planning Board heard this request and, and, uh, missed, and they voted six to one to recommend approval of the request with some existing buffers along the sides of the property and, uh, as, as part of the conditions. William Johnson, uh, has appealed the decision of the Planning Board to rezon this 4.3 acres. And, uh, the matter of the appeal is what's before the board tonight. So, Mr. Chairman, that's a review of the request, and I guess the best way to start off, it would be to ask Mr. Brady to come, come forward and to ask, so the board could ask you questions.
Wait, wait, before, does any, any commissioner have any questions for Mr. Johnson? Before we do that? Any questions of the process? All right, go ahead.
Okay, Mr. Brady, you wanna come forward?
We will, um... He's coming for the public here. We need to open the public hearing. So we will now officially open the public hearing for the process, and, uh, we will ask for Mr. Brady and anyone who's here to speak in, for, for the request or for the, the project, and then those that are against it. So, Mr. Brady, thank you.
Well, give the board and, and the public that's here just a general outline of what you plan to do. Issues such as how many employees that you will have, uh, the hours of operation and the days of operations, information like that, that would talk to the intensity of the activity that you want to do.
Okay. Right now, I'm in the logging business. We cut pine and hardwood, the intentions with the sawmill is to just cut cross ties. So there'll be times where we don't saw for a month, two months, maybe three months, and then there may be times we saw a week or two at a time. Employees, I don't see at as large as having over five or six.
Mr. Brady, have you, have you been in, is this a new startup business for you, the, the sawmill, or have you been doing that, but you're expanding it?
I grew up around it. Um, I just recently purchased a sawmill last year, but I've been in the logging business since I got out of school.
Right. Right. Do you understand the conditions that the Planning Board, uh, relative to your hours and to the buffers that are required? Do you understand?
I think we said at the last meeting, it was 7:30 till 4 o'clock Monday through Friday, and I think it was like 7:30 till 1 or 2, is that correct? On Saturday.
Yeah, I, I didn't see that.
And you would abide by those conditions if the board would approve that?
There'd be more than enough to work, yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Monday through Saturday, 7 to 4.
Yeah, it says 7, uh, 7 to 4. Yeah, the only hours I saw was 7 to 4.
Monday through Saturday.
Yeah.
Monday, Monday through Saturday.
You also said it might not be every day.
It won't be every day. I mean, it's just not feasible for us at this time for it to be every day, and I don't foresee that anywhere in the near future. All I, all I want to do is just take some of the logs we cut and saw some of them on the side, and that's, that's it. I don't foresee it being a large operation at any time. I mean, there's not enough land there for that. Furthermore, my mom and dad live in the little block that's cut out there, and then my grandfather lives on the corner. I don't want that in their backyard.
Right. And the buffers, level 3?
Level 3, um, along the highway, I don't know why it wasn't on the survey, but they had it along on the side that joins the field. They didn't put one on the highway, but there needs...
On 22 or on Henshaw?
No, sir, on Henshaw Town. But there needs to be one there.
And, and if you look at it, go back to the picture, if, or somebody looking at this?
Sorry, go ahead, just, you flip back.
No. All right, if you see where it's cut out there, all those trees are, um, that are already there are a natural buffer for your grandfather's property, I believe, okay? And what made you decide to do cross ties?
It's just what my grandfather, when he saw, that's what he done predominantly. I mean, he cut other wood too, but mostly what he done, so I, I guess I understand that more than I do the great markets.
Sure, sure, I just wondered if there was a specific market for those, or if there was a particular reason that that's what you decided to do?
There's some local markets that I know about for them.
Okay.
And your access is off of Henshaw?
Yes, sir.
Now, the picture I see here that I'm showing, uh, that's a, that's a 13-acre track. The actual 3.4 is a, only a part?
That's correct, 4.3 acres.
Or 4.3, excuse me?
That's okay.
4.3 is only a, a, uh, a portion of that 13-acre track that'll come off of, uh, Henshaw Town Road. I think we've got another, uh, if you go back to that, uh, that, uh...
So there you go.
Uh, 'cause I, when I was looking, I was looking at the whole thing, and I said, oh, wait a minute, that's, it's only part of what the whole track is?
Yes, sir.
And of course, that's what you're asking for, is the 4.3 acres there? And that would be inclusive of buffering around there? Okay. Well, now, that, that kinda shaded area, that's the proposed area to be rezoned?
Yeah.
That 4.3?
If you look at it, it should be the top left-hand corner.
Yeah. So the 13, uh, the other part of the 13 acres is not asked to be rezoned, just that?
Just the 4.3.
That 4.3 acre part? And your, your, uh, buffering would be inclusive inside that 4.3?
Yes.
Okay.
Is that your residence?
That?
No.
That's showing, go back to the other one, Hal, that's... That's showing the, the rectangle where the existing building is? No.
The, the red rectangle is...
The what?
The red rectangle in the center, that's the six tenths of an acre where my, my dad lives, my mom and dad.
All right.
That's a, that's a...
Right.
What, what are you planning, uh, you said you're gonna cut cross ties and that kinda thing? Are you gonna, I guess what's this, the yard gonna look, are you gonna store lumber there, or will it be sawn and hauled out immediately?
I mean, it won't be immediately, but I mean, it's not gonna be a long period of time.
It's not gonna be, yeah, okay.
If you leave it on the yard, you're not gonna get paid for it.
Right, right, right.
The map itself.
What about, uh...
There you go.
...sawdust bark, all that kinda thing?
Like to find markets for it, sell them.
Okay.
You're just rough cutting?
Yes, sir.
You're not doing planing?
No.
Planters?
Selling with slabs.
Rough cut, green lumber.
And the building will be a 40 by 30 building, and you'll be sawing inside?
I believe it was 40 by 80.
40 by 80, excuse me? And the sawing will be done inside of the structure? Will it be, that be enclosed, or will that just be a building?
I like it to be partially enclosed, um, but you're gonna have to have some openings to get the logs in and get the lumber out. But it'd be nice to have it partially enclosed to kinda keep the weather out.
And again, for, for my clarification, uh, you're looking at, uh, trucks hauling in the logs?
Yes, sir.
And you anticipate, how many, I don't know that you'd know, but would you anticipate many law, uh, trucks?
On a good week, we may haul in 10 to 12 loads. And obviously, you're not gonna haul out that much lumber with that many logs coming in. But that would be on a really good week that I don't foresee no time soon.
And your saw, uh, your saw, uh, sawdust pile and thing like that would be located there? Any, any, uh...
It'd be within the 4.3 acres, yes.
Anything that's left on there? But you don't see debarking?
Maybe later on, but not, not at this time, no.
Okay. Other questions? How many trucks would you anticipate coming in in a week? Just as a guess? I know you don't know.
Hauling logs in, I'd say probably no more than 12 loads a week.
What about going out?
Six or eight.
And that's not every day either, of course?
Lord, no.
And that's not every day?
No.
Are you talking about maybe 20 trucks a week?
At the most, Albert, yeah.
This is a conditional zoning district, right?
Yes.
So if he has to abide by that, and what would entail him having to come back before the Planning Board to, would it be increasing the, uh, what would trigger him to have to come back before the Planning Board?
If he, if he expands beyond the intensity of what you're expressing to this board and what you have agreed to, if you expand, when we look at this site plan, you, you've got your 4.3 acres there that's highlighted, and then there's a remainder of that 13.7 acre track fronting over there on Highway 22. What we see a lot over time, when a business starts out and it's, it's small and it's not gonna have a lot of impact, it expands if it's successful. If you were to expand into this other area, you would have to come back before the board to have your conditional zoning amended to allow that, because you are confined now to that 4.3 acres, and expansion would not allow.
That's, that's fine with me.
If you bought another saw and built another building, that'd be?
Yes.
Same thing.
Same thing.
Could you repeat that? I didn't.
If you expand beyond that 4.3 acres and expect, and, and add another buildings out there and, and other activities beyond what you've explained to the board, you have to come back before the county and have that approved.
Okay.
And just like, like you said, for examples, like if you started building pallets, that kind of operation, I would think, if you started, if you bought another saw and built another building for it, e- even inside that footprint, you know, but just specifically for the use of this, you know, minimal kinda use sawmill?
Okay.
Cause you kinda gave us a specific product you're trying to produce?
Yes.
Pretty much, so.
And you, you agreed to those, uh, conditions at the...
Yes, I do.
Planning Board, right? Your John Deere diesel power unit, would it be inside that building or outside?
It would be inside.
So that would reduce some of the noise that it would be producing?
I would think so, yes.
Is that a fully enclosed building?
No, it would not be fully enclosed.
It's gonna have one, at least one open side on it, or...
I'd say it'd be between a third and a half enclosed, I mean, cause for logs to go in and then lumber to come out.
Right, right. Other questions? You, you anticipate this to be a full year-round operation?
My intentions was, when you're logging and it goes to rain a lot and it gets wet and you can't work?
Sure.
If we can't work in the woods, we could go saw some, so not every day, but it would be, it would not be seized, it would be a year-round thing.
Right. But it would be a, uh, some days it might not be anything, some days you'd be all day?
Yes, sir.
And of course, I think the hours that saw here were 7 to 4, I think?
Yep.
Is that not correct?
Yes.
Yes.
May I make a clarification?
Right now, clarify for me, pardon me.
I'm sorry, I was, um, I just got notice from Mr. Mangum that the hours of operation were established at the Planning Board meeting as 7 to 4 Monday through Friday and 7 to 12 on Saturday. Thank you.
Is that what you would anticipate here?
Yes, that's just fine.
It'd be, it'd be the, uh, five and a half days that you could have people there, not that they would be every day, I understand that, that they would be, that would give you that flexibility?
Yes.
And how close are you to the next house location?
I guess the closest one would be my mom and dad's house inside the six tenths of acre, or my grandfather's, which would be on the corner of Henshaw Town and 22.
All right, any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Brady.
Thank you.
Mr. Brady? Could you sign up for me? Thank you.
Is there anyone else here this afternoon to speak in favor of, um, of the business, of the request? Okay, now, those that would, uh, speak, actually the petitioner for the appeal, um, anyone here to speak on their behalf?
Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity. In the interest of remaining concise and staying on point, I'm simply gonna read a prepared statement, if that's okay? All right, "This appeal is an effort to obtain a fair hearing in which our concerns will not only be heard but be thoughtfully and fairly considered. In the Planning Board hearing, we waited three hours to present our case, and it would seem since it was the end of a long night, it was hurriedly acted upon based on the desires of the board and not the interest of the community. We believe it would have been appropriate for board members to recuse themselves if the possibility of bias or conflict of interest existed, since three board members, including the Chair of the Board, spoke favorably, favorably of the applicant's family and their businesses. It appears that the decision was made prior to our concerns even being presented. This also appeared to be the reasons for the inconsistency in the decision-making that night. The request prior to ours was denied due to neighbors being upset at how the proposed change would present an eyesore. Although our concerns included the same fact as well as other concerns, it was minimized by the board. Please note that the addition of a sawmill, equipment, stacks of timber, and sawmill waste would disfigure the landscape, creating an unsightly view every day for the neighbors. It would also include unwelcome noise, dust, mud in the roadway, and potential road damage. This will only increase safety concerns for an already dangerous intersection. It may even been, have been prudent to table the decision until some open-ended questions could be answered. The rezoning applicant hadn't requested a DOT driveway permit, so it is unclear exactly where a driveway would be allowed, what access improvements would be put in place, and how the allowable location would impact safe access to a small road by large logging trucks. Also, a request had been submitted to the DOT for accident statistics involving the affected intersection. The DOT had not provided this report at the time of the earlier hearing. An issue that we found extremely distressing was the Planning Board making a specific point of granting weekend operating hours even though the applicant had not made the request. That further gave the impression that the Planning Board may have been acting on the applicant's behalf. In preparing for the Planning Board meeting, I noticed that the County Technical Review Committee had recommended denying the rezoning request based on similar concerns I had as a nearby neighbor. The Planning Board advised the applicant that conditions such as buffers would need to be met, although specifics were not provided as to how this would be accomplished. I'm concerned that if vegetation is used to meet the requirements for buffers, it simply will not be effective for, for a long time. A major concern I have is concealed gradual growth. The applicant stated this was to be a small operation, and my question is, for how long? I know these endeavors have a way of creeping upwards slowly enough that they go undetected by regulatory authorities. The applicant has requested rezoning of 4.3 acres of a 13.3 acre track. I cannot imagine 4.3 acres being enough room for any sawmill operation, even a small one. My fear is that, is that expansion into the additional acreage will occur without being noticed further. Even if the applicant remains true to his word and maintains a small operation, what will happen if he sold or leased the operation? Would the next owner abide by the stated intent of maintaining a small operation? I got a few things I wanna share with you right here. I made six comments. Okay, I have provided a few pictures that I believe will be helpful in evaluating this rezoning request. Other speakers will provide additional photos. The photos included in the Planning Board packet were in some cases deceiving. One in particular, which is on the front of that packet I gave you, picture three, gave the impression that farmland was the only nearby, only property nearby. The second picture I included provides a more comprehensive view showing structures having a direct view of the property. I've also provided a couple of images of the intersection. Unfortunately, those pictures do not provide a clear understanding of the blind hill on Highway 22 approaching from the south. In my last photo, neither of the vehicles stopped at the intersection will see the car traveling north on Highway 22 until it reaches the forked intersection there at Troy Cavanaugh's Road. I presented the Planning Board with a summary of community concerns with this rezoning request, along with a list of signatures of citizens in opposition to the rezoning. This can be found in the minutes of the Planning Board meeting, and, and I have provided copies for your review tonight. I will not rehash all of these concerns since they are already on record. The citizens who oppose this rezoning remain opposed. This brings me to my biggest concern. Granting this rezoning request will set a precedent. I fear that approving this rezoning will only make it easier for additional industrial rezoning to occur in this area in the future. I, along with the other citizens in opposition, chose to build or buy residence in a location devoid of the unpleasant aspects of an industrialized area. I see the prospect of retiring in a quiet country, community fading. Some may view this project as progress, I see it as deterioration of our community. I hope you can see that as well. I will close by asking this simple question. Would you want a commercial sawmill around your house? Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Anybody have a question, Mr. Johnson? I would say on, um, on the driveway permit, that, that's his risk. I mean, we, we don't set that. He has to get that from the state, and they, they may subject him to conditions, but that's all done by, by DOT. Uh, and I, I think you've heard, you know, we've been pretty, pretty direct on any expansion that, that would take place, or try to take place there, so...
Well, when I made the request for the accident statistics for that intersection, I spoke to a Division 8 engineer for DOT, and, uh, he was very serious about businesses required, requiring permits, which I know from firsthand as a business owner. And his explanation to me is that they seldom deny permits, but they very frequently require improvements. And I know that firsthand too, and they're not always cheap. And they, you know, when you got heavy traffic entering and exiting the highway, you can expect roadway damage, and they wanna mitigate that to the extent possible, and thus would be the requirement for improvements. So, um, yeah, I'm, I'm aware of that, and they seem to be very serious about it. And like I said, I had requested the accident statistics. They wanted to know why I needed those or wanted those, and I explained to him that I was gonna speak at a Planning Board meeting, and this was near a, an intersection near where I lived that we all know to be hazardous, and I was just kinda curious to what that would look like in the way of numbers. And, uh, so he wanted to know where this was, and so he looks and says, "We have no, no, no application for a permit." He said, "So that's something that needs to be addressed." And as you said, that's, I didn't mention that so much tonight, cause that's not my purview, and I doubt it's the purview of, of the county. I think that's probably the DOT thing, but still, I do know...
I don't know, like I said, I don't know how far it's gone, but it, he has, he definitely has to get a driveway permit, and he'll have to do what the state requires of him, but I don't, the 18-wheelers or...
Right.
Big trucks coming in and out, and it's not that far from the intersection, uh, from 22 either, so...
Right.
I think all those will probably be issues to, to be addressed, but, um...
Okay.
He'll have to have a permit.
Mr. Johnson, did you obtain those statistics?
I'm sorry, what?
Did you obtain those statistics?
Yes, I did. Uh, that report came in probably about a week. I will be glad to share a copy with you.
Can you just summarize the results too, as in addition to sharing the copy? Can you just tell us what it says too?
Honestly, I, I will say this. I think you would need to be a traffic engineer to interpret that report, and I am not. So I was able to glean a little information from it, and you can probably, um, gather s- same information I did.
Fair enough.
They're, they're very thorough. Uh, the one thing that did stand out to me, and those of us that live there are aware of this, is that eighty percent of the accidents that occurred there happened during daylight hours. Typically, if I remember correctly, and don't hold me to this, it was between the hours of ten AM and seven PM, and at various months of the year and stuff like that. Those are five years' worth of, uh, of data. So, um, but, that intersection is far safer at night than it is during the day. And our concerns as, as neighbors is there is a lot of school traffic passing through that intersection in the morning and the evening. I mean, Colridge School's just a few miles away, Faith Christian School's a few miles away, uh, the kids are crossing through there on their way to Eastern Randolph, Southeast Randolph Middle, Middle School is, they have some traffic in that area as well. And I may have missed or forgotten something, and if I have, I apologize, but, you know, that is a blind hill, and at night, you can see headlights coming up the hill, so you're actually a little safer. During the day, you know, as I said, um, you will not see a car till it's nearly in that intersection if you're crossing. If you're coming up the hill, traveling north on Highway 22, you don't see the intersection till you're almost in it. So, you know, adding additional burden to that intersection is somewhat concerning. But, uh, there again, I don't know that that would be a basis for granting a, you know, granting or denying, you know, a, a business zoning.
Where do, do you live on Henshaw?
No, I live on Highway 22.
On 22?
If, uh, that picture, the second picture I gave you, the house to the far right, that is my house.
On this picture?
Yes. Yes, that's, that's, that is my house.
Any other questions?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I was just kinda looking through, and like I said, I'm not an engineer either, but it looked like there was, in the five years, there was a total of ten crashes.
Mm-hmm.
Six of them had, uh, injuries, four property damage only, two were at night, and one was during evidently, they call it a wet crash, so...
Yeah.
And then there's some other-
That being drained?
I'm assuming that's what it means. And then, uh, I'm not sure what a Class B or a Class C crash, but three of them were Crash Bs, three of them were Crash Cs. So that kinda gives you a feel for the-
Total of six.
Total of six. I'm not sure what, how they, I'm assuming that a Class B and a Class C, well, as you go down, it's less serious. But I'm not, I'm not sure how to interpret that.
Right. That's, that's kinda where I was. The, the information is there, and there's a lot of it, but understanding it requires somebody with some specific expertise that I don't have.
In those crashes, there was, uh, sixteen injuries in those ten crashes.
Mm-hmm.
Kinda gives you a feel for it. And most of them were angle crashes.
You give them a clerk?
Yeah. Angle crashes.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Okay.
Anyone else who wishes to speak tonight?
Mr. Johnson, will you sign in, please? Thank you.
While the next person is coming up, Mr. Commissioner, uh, Mr. Chairman, if I could, I just, obviously, I'd sit and, and sit with the planning board and, and represent them. I can tell you that our planning board, from sitting with those guys for a long time, I can tell you, they take that job very seriously, and there is actually a, uh, a portion of the, a portion of the meeting where they actually call for conflicts of interest, and so there were no conflicts of interest. And the applicant stating, or the, the person filing the appeal stating that they were upset because some of the people indicated that they knew the family, I dare say that you'll find any application in any hearing where some of the board members don't know some of the family members, so... I just say that for what it's worth.
My name is Emily Johnson, and I felt compelled to speak tonight on behalf of the residents of the Buffalo Trail subdivision. My husband and I developed this subdivision in the mid-nineties and sold the lots to the original owners. These land buyers were looking for a secluded place that did not have a lot of traffic, noise, or industrial sites in the area. They were told that farming machinery would be operating in the area at times, but nothing louder than that, and there would be no loud noises on a continuing basis. Lot sizes varied from five to twelve acres, and actually, these folks could buy two lots or three lots or however much land they wanted in, on this area. And it was along the river, and we didn't need any more frontage on Deep River, we have enough. The lots were left in the natural state so that the owners could keep trees and landscape according to their preferences. The buyers wanted peace and quiet and a place to relax on their time off from work. One of the most frequent questions we were asked was concerning the future of the area after they had built their houses. We assured them that the current zoning was for agriculture, and that the land for most of these properties had been in the surrounding families for generations, and that was not likely to change. However, since we did not own the surrounding properties, we could not guarantee that it would not change at some point. At the previous hearing, several zoning board members mentioned that they knew the Brady family and had conducted business with them, and they were good people. I cannot understand why they did not recuse themselves if they were so knowledgeable about this family. I have known this family for most of my life, and they are good people, but the residents of the Buffalo Trail community are also good people. That has nothing to do with rezoning property for an unsightly commercial enterprise in a residential area in a farming community. I remind you that the farmer area frequently has complaints concerning the McDowell sawmill. However, his sawmill was there before most of the Buffalo, the surrounding houses were built. In our neighborhood, the Buffalo Trail subdivision has been there twenty-five or more years prior to the proposed sawmill's arrival. There are currently four site-built houses and one under construction. These are very nice houses. I traveled the road into the area this past week, and I was traveling, as I was traveling back out, I could clearly see the sawmill site. The location of the sawmill driveway, where I think it's going to be, is just barely one tenth of a mile from the entrance to Buffalo Trail. These residents will be disturbed by the noise, the dust, and the eyesore the sawmill will create once it's operational. Not only that, the zoning board allowed this, uh, sawmill to operate seven days a week. I cannot understand how they could allow this industry to operate on weekends in a residential setting. Anyone traveling Henshaw Town Road will be exposed to an unsightly area with refuse from the wood, the machinery, and the log piles. There is no way it can be hidden from sight. The road would require it to be open along that size. I ask you to reconsider the rezoning for this commercial project in this residential farming community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Uh, anyone have a question or a comment?
The arrows mark where those houses are. We weren't trying to build a large subdivision. We just were trying to, um, make it small and let people buy the lot, size lots they wanted.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Okay, that's enough for everyone, including Dana. Does everybody got theirs? All right. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am Rhonda Wortman. My husband, my late husband, John Wortman III, and I purchased nine acres on Highway 22 from the Johnson family twenty-six years ago on March nineteenth, nineteen ninety-seven. As you'll see on the front page there, that is our property right here, and the said rezoning request right there. Based on our education and background, we could have built our forever home and raised our family anywhere in the country. However, since we are both native to Randolph County, with family in the area, we desire a rural environment where we could enjoy the peace and calmness of nature. Therefore, after college, we opted to return to Randolph County. We designed, built our house, and have enjoyed living in a quiet community. As noted on the pages number one and number two, the current view from my front yard, my side yard, my patio, my pool surround, and my daughter's bedroom is now the rezoning request area. As you can imagine, we were frustrated and disappointed when the area was clear-cut and logging equipment, as noted in pages three, four, five, and six, were placed on site prior to the November fifteenth Planning-Zoning Board meeting, as if that meeting was only a formality and our valid concerns were not taken into consideration. We plead with the commissioners tonight to heed the recommendations of the Technical Review Committee, which reported that the request should be denied by the Randolph County Planning Board based on Policies Three Point Six and Three Point Eleven. The TRC noted that the applicant has clear-cut the property of the existing vegetation prior to applying for this rezoning, which could have created a good buffer for the surrounding community. Additionally, other concerns raised by the TRC is the amount of school traffic, with both Colridge Elementary School and Faith Christian School only being two miles from this intersection. This intersection is already very busy and quite dangerous due to limited visibility from the south, as Mr. Johnson has already mentioned, from the accident report. Just from our personal standpoint, my daughter, who is now driving, um, our rule, if you will, for this intersection is you do not pull out of that intersection if anyone is coming from the north. You cannot see from the south. If you pull out of the south and someone's coming, you have the north lane to pull over into for them to pass you by. It is that dangerous. I would say at least once a week coming home, we have that, we have a, a near accident because it is very dangerous. So with buses and the logging equipment and the school traffic, it's just gonna make the situation worse. In closing, as a community, we would greatly appreciate the board heeding the advice of the Technical Review Committee and the concerns of your constituents, and overturn the planning board decision to rezone. Are there any questions?
Questions? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else who wishes to speak?
Good evening. Can you hear me all right?
Good evening.
My name is Mike Hanson. I live on Parks Crossroads Church Road, two eight five seven, which is, uh, an extension to Henshaw Town Road on the other side of 22. Unlike a lot of the people here tonight, I was not at the original planning board, so a lot of the information that I have received is, uh, secondhand and reading minutes, lots of, lots of minutes, and so on. There's quite a bit of information in this, uh, and there's, these are additional signatories in support of William Johnson's, uh, original, um, exhibit, but it also goes into a little bit more detail about the people who have also signed on here. And I just want to read the summary pages. There's some backup data that I can provide you with as well. The undersigned wish to support the original objections to this rezoning request outlined in Exhibit Four, William Johnson et al., in November two, two thousand twenty-two Planning Board Meeting minutes, and offer this document to further substantiate reasons against this rezoning decision, supported by data and local insight. As part of the Randolph County Strategic Plan, commissioners commit to attract and enable new businesses to grow in Randolph County. The commissioners have been very successful in this goal in recent years. The Randolph County Strategic Plan also commits commissioners to improve the health and well-being of residents, transportation safety, and a thriving agricultural industry. These strategic areas were not seriously considered by the planning board in their rezoning. Traffic safety hazards identified by the NC DOT are, are already affecting the safety of residents and students, parents, and staff, driving to and from four nearby schools, and slow-moving farm vehicles. The undersigned would also like the rezoning, the reasoning behind the Randolph County Staff Technical Review Committee's recommendation to deny this rezoning request was disregarded. In summary, the NC DOT traffic safety data is clea-, in clear opposition to granting this rezoning decision. The intersection where the entrance to the rezoned site is located has been identified by the NC DOT as potentially hazard in the twenty-twenty-two Highway Safety Improvement Program. NC DOT planning-level safety score, this identifies the intersection where the entrance to the site will be located as having the poorest safety on the scale using crash data from twenty seventeen to twenty twenty-one. Public school buses, personal vehicle traffic, and personal vehicle traffic increases in this intersection weekdays from four local schools and commuter traffic during business hours of the rezoned site. Eighteen-wheeler traffic from the Mount Air poultry processing plant has increased traffic in this intersection as well. Slow-moving farm equipment is a frequent sight on local roads. Roads in the area have become dangerous for bicycles, reducing options for physical activity to residents. In addition to this, this industrial rezoned property was approved in an area with, that has strong and thriving, in a strong and thriving farming corridor with a long history of farming. It is estimated that one point one to one point six million acres of NC farmland will be lost in the next seventeen years. The decision to rezone even a small amount of land in a core farming community into rural industrial sets a precedence for future farmland loss in the, in this area of Randolph County. In twenty-twenty-two, USDA announced four billion dollars of investment to create new farming-related jobs and shore up local food security. Eight hundred and fifty thousand of this is already being invested in the Triad and western North Carolina. Also, voluntary ag districts are heavily, heavily represented around and near the rezoned property. Thank you.
Very good. Do you have a hand, do you have a handout or anything?
Yeah.
I really, I sent a, uh-
Okay. All right. We, yeah, we, okay.
I think that the email was happening.
Yes. Any other speakers tonight?
Sir, can you come sign in, please? Hi, my name is Celia Harris, and I live on Highway twenty-two, uh, near the proposed sawmill. I have the same concerns that you've heard. Um, I just wanted to reiterate a few things to, uh, make sure you understood some of our, um, issues. Um, one of my primary concerns is the adherence to any recommendations, any rules that will be put in for, put forth for this project. Um, I say that because this individual clear-cut the area and graded it for the sawmill, um, as though it was going to happen before even coming to the planning board. In addition, he put in a driveway without a driveway permit. The area was clear-cut, and as a neighbor, I'm concerned that there will be no con, no concern for the neighbors because the only buffer that is left was for his family, not for the people on the other side. And my concern, too, is- And my concern, too, is if there is a vegetation buffer to be put in, number one, that's gonna take a while for it to develop and actually be a buffer. But number two is, what is the upkeep for that? Will it be up to us to demand that it be kept up? Because I can see a situation like that where plants die, things happen. And I feel like this particular business won't be one that will pay attention again to the rules and regulations that are put in place to be followed. And just also to reiterate, we did have the perception that the earlier proceeding was unfair, just because the recommendation from the Technical Review Committee was ignored. And the Planning Board gave this individual more than he asked for. The original request, I was at the meeting, he requested for business hours of Monday through Friday. What I heard that night was they approved Monday through Sunday. Now, tonight, I'm hearing Saturday only, but still, that is more than this individual asked for. So, yes, we have the perception that there was... That we weren't treated fairly. So, again, those are just a few points I wanted to make in addition to what else was said.
What was your name again?
Repeat that. Excuse me.
Go ahead.
Could you repeat what your perception of the hours should have been?
What he originally asked for the night of the Planning Board meeting was Monday through Friday. They granted him weekend, and they said Sunday. And again, tonight, I'm hearing through Saturday, but to be honest, when I've worked all week, I don't want to hear a sawmill at 7:00 on Saturday morning.
The original application didn't have any hours of operation? The original application?
And I... In the minutes...
The original application...
The original application had no hours. There were... So, the hours first became an issue when conditions started being placed on there. So, the original application is for 24/7. I mean, so it's... So, that's how that works.
Well, and my concern is, you know, if this is approved, you won't be able to put the genie back in the bottle. This will creep into something that it's already an eyesore before it's even begun. You've seen from the pictures, there's already equipment that doesn't even look usable with grass growing up around it. I just feel like it's gonna get worse instead of better.
Any other comments? I... I only see one reference to minute, to times, and it just says that Mr. Brady said the sawmill would run from 7:00 until 4:00 p.m. and would not operate daily. Dana, I don't know where there was other comment about Saturday. I don't see it in the motion that was made.
It's in the minutes.
Tim, can you help me out?
It's on top of page 19 of 20.
Right there, yeah. I see it. The other one's on page 17. Where he...
They talked about just before we made the motion, they were talking about...
Yes.
Mr. Mangum confirmed that the original... Excuse me. Timeframe was Monday through Saturday, 7:00 to 4:00, but the official ending time on Saturday ended up being 12:00. So, it probably progressed throughout the hearing. So, 7:00 to 4:00, Monday through Friday, 7:00 to 12:00 on Saturday was what was agreed upon by the applicant.
That's not what's in here either. This says 7:00 to 4:00, Monday through Saturday.
I wasn't at the hearing, so I'm just giving you the information I was given by Mr. Mangum.
I'm assuming he got a signed amendment to the application. Is that how that works?
He... Yeah. He would have to sign that. See, I asked before we started, is there anything that needs to be signed tonight? You didn't think so.
It's already signed. If this is a... As far as its operations.
So, what does it say?
If you change the time, he has to sign a agreement.
What does that say?
It says 7:00 to 4:00, Monday through Friday, and 7:00 to 12:00 on Saturday, and that's what's signed by the applicant.
That's the signed application.
7:00 to 12:00 or 7:30 to 12:00?
Seven.
7:00 to 12:00?
Yes. Go ahead, that's fine. Thank you.
Okay. Comment? Is anyone else here to speak tonight? Hearing none, then we will close the public hearing, and we will come back to the board for discussions and decisions. It does... Some of the photos show that there are... Has been activity there before. Approval process was underway, so... So, none of this is in effect till we decide tonight what action to take. Comments from the board? Go ahead. What you see? What you've heard?
Well, I guess this may be for Mr. Morgan. Does the driveway application mean anything to us?
No.
Okay. I mean, I guess you've mentioned this before at other meetings and kind of alluded to it tonight. All of... I'm just referring to this.
Yeah.
Is at the owner's risk.
Well, the driveway permit is definitely at the owner's risk because he obviously has not applied. I don't know if you've... Have you applied already, Mr. Brady? So, whatever restrictions, requirements that DOT puts on him, that's what he's gotta do.
As far as addressing, like, it's been graded, there's a driveway there, that's at the owner's risk. I mean, if it...
That's correct.
Whatever way it goes, it's their deal, right?
It's just like... It's just like a perk permit.
Yeah.
I mean, if we approve that and then...
It doesn't perk.
It doesn't perk, or if the DOT doesn't issue the permit, then they're not allowed to proceed.
Right.
I think we need to do a couple of things. Number one, establish what the hours really should be. And of course, in agreeance with the applicant, but I think we'd better do that because that tends to creep, and it creeps quickly. Also, the other thing is the matter of the buffering. I think the buffering needs to be established, that it be put in and around the area there, even including along the... Including the Henshaw Town Road. The buffering needs to be there. As to the density of that, I'll kind of... I'll kind of leave that to the board's discretion there, but I think there needs to be buffering all the way around. And then, of course, the Planning Department has to be the one that would be ensuring that and making sure that it's maintained. And that has to be... Is that not right, Hal?
Yes.
They'll have to make sure that it's maintained. If it's not maintained, then he's in violation.
This says the level three buffer shown on the site plan along most of the perimeter except the roadway.
Right.
And then, but the others was a setback in consideration of site distances.
The concern about...
What this is saying is no buffers on the roadway.
Yeah, the concern about a buffer on that roadway was that you were creating an obstruction to seeing traffic coming. I think that was the concern about that. The Technical Review Committee, the... One of the main reasons of their denial was that we're presented with a situation where the land's already been cleared, his equipment's already sitting out there, and there's no buffers even to begin to address. So, the Technical Review Committee recommended no on this request for that reason, is we're being presented with something that's already accomplished out there to a large degree. And I think what the way the plant... And I agree with the attorney. There's no conflict of interest among the Planning Board. They address that at the beginning of each meeting, whether they have or do not have a conflict of interest, and I'm confident they did not. The word "industrial" sometimes is misconstrued when it's applied out in a rural environment. And in Randolph County, we've taken special efforts to distinguish between industrial, like what you would see surrounding an urban area like Ashboro or Archdale or our other municipalities, and what you see out in a rural environment. And the fact is, wood processing, which is what sawmill work is, is a rural activity. You expect to see that. It's a rural industrial activity. So, I just wanted to say that there's a difference in the word "industrial" when it's implied... Applied out in Randolph County rural areas and "industrial" when it's applied close in to municipalities. And it was designed specifically to handle sawmills and wood processing operations, which by the very nature, you find out in rural areas here. The Planning Board was concerned about times of operation, and originally, I don't... I don't even think that was addressed until it came to the Planning Board meeting. And by putting a time limit on Saturdays, it's 7:00 to 12:00, if he didn't even plan to operate on Saturdays, that's fine, but if he did, that's extra regulations that he must meet to operate that sawmill out there. We have... And I stress this again because we've seen it over and over the decades, is that a good business gets started in a community, everyone says, well, this is gonna be a small, no-impact business, it's just gonna be real small, but then over time, what happens is it grows. And that's what you want a business to do anyways, to grow over time, and it expands. And what starts out as a small, relatively low-impact rural industrial operation becomes a major industrial operation. And that was another reason the Technical Review Committee had a concern about this particular request. It was already established out there before any request of the county was made, and yes, there is a lot of land to the rear, which we've seen over the years in other situations, it's just natural to grow into that property. So, you... We're looking at a four-point some acre tract, but it could grow beyond that, and if it did, it would have to come back before this board to be considered again for that. I just stress that because I've seen it so many times over the years, good intentions on everybody's part, it grows beyond what was considered.
Now, right here in the minutes, Mr. Beeson said, "The board decides to pass the request, he would like to add a condition that a buffer along the road be added." So, did that happen?
No.
No?
No.
I do think if it's approved...
If the board wants to add a buffer, you can. I'm just explaining what the Planning Board's concern was, is visibility.
And you're gonna have 18-wheelers out there?
See, here it come down to the bottom, it came back again right before the motion was made, that the buffer shown on the perimeter of the site should also be set back so they do not impede visibility for traffic, but that's still not on the roadway.
Interpreted as not on that roadway.
The motion... The motion has not specified the specific conditions. I know, but I'm saying the motion that was made at the Planning Board does not address the specific, in particular, the hours and the buffer is not referenced in this motion.
Those are part of the ordinance, I believe. Is that correct, Hal?
Is what?
Those are part of the ordinance that he would have signed at the hearing before they made the motion.
Yes.
And that, therefore, they become incorporated based on the motion.
Right. He has signed what those conditions were.
But since we're starting all anew, we can...
You can...
Put anything we want to.
Yes. You can...
Yes.
So, really, what the Planning Board did, it don't matter.
It's a denovo hearing.
I'm just trying to explain why the Planning Board did what they did.
Yeah.
I do... I agree with Maxon. We need to be specific in those... In the hours and the buffers, what is and is not required, because it will come up. And I... Hours of... He hadn't planned to work on Saturday. I don't know why that... Why that became an issue.
Monday and Friday is no... If you didn't like it, you don't have to do it.
Now, do you... Am I hearing, would there be an obstruction for a buffer to be put along the highway there? Would this be... Let it be set back so it would not be...
Yeah, you can just pull it back to where you don't interfere with the traffic.
If you don't have a buffer along that road, all you got back here is wide open country. I know.
There it is.
Yes. Right. And as we've seen, those hours tend to get a lot more flexible as time goes on, no matter what you put on them. But... Mr. Brady, was it your intention all along to run on Saturday?
I'd like to, yes, sir. Same as well.
All right. Who's got... Who's got a suggestion here? I have... I think the buffer along the road should be added.
I agree with that. I think we need to establish the hours. It's gonna be accommodable to those people who live around there, though. If they really want to do this, they'll accommodate the hours.
Right.
So, we gotta do.
The other... The other comments, and it's been stated here tonight by Mr. Brady, and was stated at the Planning Board, he's not expecting business every day. He doesn't expect to be working every single day. So, there's plenty of time during the week to meet... To meet the workload.
I agree, because you got those people that are close enough that they don't need to be, like the lady said, they don't need to be bothered on Saturdays and nor Sundays by somebody working because... Just because they can.
Yeah, the chairman's question is, does the applicant have to agree? And so, the answer is yes. And so, if this board wants to make a recommendation of conditions, you'll ask the applicant if the applicant agrees with those conditions. If he does, Mr. Mangum will print out a new application with those amended conditions, and then you'll vote on that. If the applicant does not agree with those conditions, then you're free to vote however you like.
All right. What do we hear?
It seems to me, I mean, I don't want to be unduly...
Oh, can I speak up?
I'm doing the best I can, Matt. This is a hard night. It seems to me that I don't... I don't think... It's a balance with government. But it seems to me, if there were a gravel drive that were maintained, that it would cut down on the mud. that it would cut down on the mud. They talked about mud? Well, if you've got a gravel drive, seems to me like it would cut down on the mud. They logged out behind me for almost a year, day and night. Now, they were, they were cutting logs. That was totally different from this. But trucks are not going to be bringing in mud, right?
No, they will bring in mud.
But, but if they're driving in with logs, will that mud not be elsewhere, wherever they brought the logs in from?
Come out on... No, it can come right down that road. Yes. Believe me, it'll come right down that road.
It depends on how far they're coming. I mean, if they're coming a mile down the road, yes. But if they're coming from ten miles away, I would think that, that mud's probably going to be knocked off that...
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
It just depends. It's not on where those logs are going to be coming from, but...
But even if there is a gravel drive there, you're going to have, if it's wet, you're going to have, those trucks are loaded and heavy, and you're going to have them coming in. Unless you want to put a wash pit with it so they can wash before they get there.
Well, it depends on how much you gravel, you know, if it's a gravel yard, then that's one thing, too. And, and that's not on the site plan either, but...
Also, one question I have. We're talking about a buffer here, Hal. And we mentioned a class three. I think it behooves us to explain to the crowd out here what a class three buffer is.
Well, that's three rows, I believe, I'm sorry. It's three rows of evergreens that are planted in a staggered way so that they'll provide maximum cover over time. They have to be planted and maintained. Have I seen buffers die? Yes, I have. It's the highest level, level of buffer that... Yes, it is. There's only... That we can require.
And the planning department is supposed to maintain that? To make sure that that buffer stays there and is healthy?
Yes, the code enforcement would look at that. It's, it's very difficult to, to enforce.
I understand that. But I think we need these folks to understand what, what we're talking about when, when we're talking about these things. Mr. Brady, would you accept the buffers on the, on the Henshaw Road?
Yes, I would myself, I would include one.
Same level buffer?
Same, same level, level three, same level three buffers.
Same level buffer.
Correct. Now, anybody want to speak to the hours?
Again, if you don't set the hours, they tend to, well, expand.
Right now, the hours are set...
It doesn't matter what we're going to set.
Yeah, the hours are, right now, the hours are set seven to four, Monday through Friday, and seven to twelve on Saturday. That's what, that's what's been signed, or he's agreed to.
And whatever we decide is or should be, he's going to need to...
Supersede, supersede that.
Okay.
Correct.
Yes. And I would say, set the hours at seven to four, Monday through Friday only.
Well, you want to make a motion? Okay. Mr. Brady, would you accept seven to four, Monday through Friday? The answer is yes. He's accepted.
Mr. Mangan, I don't know if you heard that. Did you hear that? Would you be able to amend the application to reflect level three buffer on all sides of the perimeter, with that portion on Henshaw Town Road to be set back in such a way as to, as not to impair the visibility on Henshaw Town Road, and for the hours of operation to be from 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., Monday through Friday only? The applicant has expressed their consent to those conditions.
So, we're moving to Saturday operation hours?
It's Monday through Friday, seven to four a.m. only, yes.
Okay, but you're not talking about the sides where there's already a natural buffer?
No, we're just talking, everything's addressed except the buffer on Henshaw.
Well, this shows...
This, 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 the applica, application shows a level three buffer around the entire, around the entire perimeter. That's, that's what will be required. And that was a part of the, the last application. That's what a part, that's what's on the map, that's the site plan that's shown.
I see it, and I think it's kind of foolish. You got the buffer God gave you over there. And now, you've got the woods there.
But, but he clear-cut the fore.
Yeah. Right, right. Yeah, what, what's in...
I mean, I understand where you come from.
Yeah, it's just a part of here along Henshaw Town Road. It's not already addressed by buffers.
What if that's somebody else's property that has it?
You're, you're using somebody else's buffer. If, with what you do, you're, you're asking the neighbor's property to be buffer, as opposed to the applicant.
All right, but all, I mean, all of that is family land.
Doesn't matter.
I understand. You're, you're saying...
You're thinking for the future.
Right, right.
Correct.
Well, let's make sure...
And we can't, we can't put any restrictions on the neighbor's land. The week after this application is approved, the neighbor could clear-cut their land, and then there would be nobody.
Mr. Morgan, would you, would you help us address wording for a motion to accomplish those two changes? Is it properly worded, the one we have?
When he gets the application, we can get a copy from him, and that will be included as, as an exhibit with, as the ordinance.
You have that ready?
Please, sir.
I'm not sure about the first condition that you mentioned. We've got Eric Martin, level three buffer along Henshaw Town Road. The site plan showed buffer around the remainder of the property he's wanting to resell.
The buffer's around the perimeter stays in, just like it, like it is. But it doesn't show that. It's on the, it's on, it's on the, it's on his, it's on Mr. Brady's side there.
Yeah, the, the, yeah, the, the plan shows that level three buffer all the way around, except for...
Except on Henshaw Town Road.
It included Henshaw, the one you just gave us.
Yes.
But I think, do we need to make sure that's in writing?
Yeah, it needs to be, it needs to be in that ordinance that Mr. Brady's going to sign, that that's there, and that his hours of operation are seven to four, Monday through Friday. And have Mr. Brady to sign that, then we can make a motion which references the map amendment ordinance. And that's where those provisions will be placed, and that's what he'll have to abide by.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Folks, we, we try to, we try to make some compromise and try... Our, our, I think our motivation here is to provide jobs and people that need to make a living, that they can do that at the same time respecting as, that we can, integrity of the community. And I, I think that that's what we've been trying to do here tonight. So, we have a, a ordinance that will set the hours of operation from seven to four, Monday through Friday, on Saturday, and it establishes a level three buffer along Henshaw Town Road so as to not hinder or create a site issue.
In essence, all the way around the property.
And, and the, the buffer is all the way around the property. This is an addition to that prop, to that buffer, is one on Henshaw Town Road. So, now we have the map amendment ordinance, properly signed by Mr. Brady and Eric Martin, our county official.
They both signed it?
Yes. Yes. So, you agree, then we would have a motion to, basically to, to use the same. We have one to approve and we have one to deny. This would, for approval, would, would reference, as it does, the map amendment ordinance, and that's what we have.
Well, Mr. Chairman, then I'll, I'll make the motion to approve. This is a rezoning request to rezone the specific or specified parcels on the rezoning application in the map amendment ordinance to the requested zoning district based upon the determination of consistency and findings of reasonableness and public interest. Statements that are included in the planning board agenda submitted during the rezoning presentation and, as may be amended, incorporated into the motion to be included in the minutes, as well as the site plans, with any and all agreed-upon revisions also incorporated to the motion, and that the request is also consistent with the Randolph County Growth Management Plan.
We have a motion, and I have a second. I have a second to the motion.
Second.
All right, further discussion. I know we've had quite a bit. Everyone understands what, what we're doing here, what, what, what the motion encompasses.
Mr. Chairman, I, Mr. Chairman, I think you've got to do more than just the second. Yep.
Oh, okay. Where do, where do I need to keep...
Just read the whole thing.
All right. Start with, taking second, and then read the whole thing.
I second the motion to approve the rezoning request, rezone the specified parcels, rezoning application in the map amendment ordinance. We have to request a zoning district based upon the determination of consistency and findings of reasonableness and public interest. Statements that are included in the planning and zoning board agenda submitted during the rezoning presentation as may be amended incorporated into the motion to be included in the minutes, as well as the site plans, which we have, with any and all agreed-upon revisions, which we have also incorporated into the motion. That request is also consistent with the Randolph County Growth Management Plan.
I have a motion and a second. Further discussion or questions on the issue? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion to approve, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those no, and the motion passes unanimously. Thank all of you for your participation tonight, being a part of this process. And we will, this, this gives the county some responsibility to make sure that these requirements are followed, and that there's no expansion of that business without you knowing about it and, and being a part of that process as well. So, I have a motion, any other business? Have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved, thank you, and we are adjourned. Thank all of you again, thank all of our folks at home.